Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we held at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through those perilous fights? All the red parts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land and of the free and the home of the brave? I was a little nervous.
Thank you, Abigail, yes.
Katie? Yes, Curious.
I didn't change my password.
I don't know who does it. Right, but what did you do to get to this?
On the thing that's full over by the water.
I smelled it right. Got it.
Probably forgot.
Yes.
Thank you, Abby. Announcement by the President as read by the Secretary. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 were distributed by the Secretary on April 11th, 2018. It is now time for student recognitions, beginning with the Superintendent and Board President's comments referring to those recognitions. Mr. Superintendent and President, sir.
Thank you. That would be... Want me to kick off, Mr. Isola, or... It's up to you, but I'll be happy to take a stab at it, but I'm going to leave the heavy lifting to you, sir. I want to first say thank you. We have a very, very busy agenda tonight. One of the most rewarding parts of our job as a school board is to recognize our incredible students, so, thank you. What I would like to do is just, as Mr. Isola is going to go into more detail on who we're recognizing tonight, I just wanted to set a couple of ground rules on how we want to go through the recognition ceremony. Out of respect to everyone, because we have so many folks here tonight, I would ask respectfully that we all remain seated and participating until we've recognized every group, and I would also like to ask, as we bring down each group, that we hold off on applause until we have everyone from that particular group on the floor, and then we'll recognize them and make sure we have opportunities to take photos for the parents and for the school district. So if we work together, we can have an incredibly good time recognizing all of our incredible students over the next 15 minutes, and I look forward to it. Mr. Isola, can you give us more detail on who we're recognizing tonight?
Sure, we'll go right ahead and get into the student recognition, one group at a time, and I think rather than be redundant, we'll just ask the administrator or staff member that's presenting to get up and intro the program that we're recognizing, and then start to recognize the kids. But I would be, you know, absent of fact if I didn't speak real quickly to the sense of pride that this room provides for us as a community, not just the school board and the school district, but as a community, and have the opportunity to recognize so many students throughout the entire year, specifically tonight, is something that I take great pride in, and it is what makes me the proudest superintendent in the state of New Jersey. So, without any further delay, let's talk about some of these great young stars that have joined us tonight. I'll ask Mr. Harvey to come on up, and our first recognition will be the folks that just conducted an outstanding board meeting, our Student Board of Education Day participants. Mr. Harvey?
We're excited tonight to introduce this year's students who participated in Howell Township Public School's Second Annual Student Board of Education Day. This day recognized the hard work and dedication of the members of the Board of Education and allowed students to experience the important role each member plays in the education of our students. These fifth grade students served as members of the Board of Education, attended committee meetings, and learned about the responsibility members of the Board assume in the operation of our schools. In preparation for this event, members of the Board of Education visited each three to five school to explain their roles. Tonight, we had at 6 o'clock the Student Board of Education meeting that the students actually conducted, and it was an excellent, excellent experience. We'd like to thank the board members and senior administration for their support, and also Mrs. Allen for helping coordinate this event.
Great. Mr. Malley, you and Mrs. Allen did a terrific job, and we want to thank you as from the board. We really appreciate it. It was a really tough act to follow, actually, you know, so we're going to do our best, but at the end of the day, today was an incredible experience, whether it was greeting them as they came into the Board of Ed office. One thing I can tell you, the superintendent wasn't kidding when he said the buzz in that building, the excitement that everyone had, having our terrific students come in and participate with them there. I know everybody that was there tremendously enjoyed it, and I was so impressed with these young students. I'd like Mrs. Malley and Mr. Banjivani, if they might, to join you and assist you in when you recognize the Members of the Student Board Day. Thank you.
And remember, we'll hold applause till the group comes up, and then we'll recognize them as a unit.
That's absolutely right.
Okay, the following students participated in the Second Annual Student Board of Education Day. Julianne LaCicero. Eric Prey. Isabella Anzavino. Sophie Tonino. Vincent Agnello. Henry Kraminsky. Sophia Gallo. Emma Pizardowski. Alexander Madpak. Landon Foulcher. Veronica Tarkowski. Imani Anaville. Violet Parker. Colin Spires. Devin Campanella. Great job today.
Great job. Let's hear it again for our Board of Ed. Mr. Isola, I know I was... They had asked us to read a proclamation, and should I hold that till after the recognitions, or would now be a good time for me to read it into the record?
The actual proclamational one from the Student Board?
From the Student Board.
That was the state, I'm sorry, sir.
That state?
That's later.
Later.
We're going to table that and continue with recognitions with your permission. Thank you, sir. Sticking to a theme, Mr. Harvey will remain up, as we take the opportunity to recognize many of our students that participated in the Patriot Pen Essay Contest, and Mr. Harvey has some information about that, and then he will call our students so that we may present them with a certificate and recognize the fine work they did here.
Okay, the Patriots' Pen is the national essay contest run by the VFW. Every year, students have the opportunity to reflect on the patriotic themes by writing an essay. This year's theme was "America's Gift to My Generation." We'd like to... The VFW would like to recognize Mrs. Libertor for her support of this contest. Every year, she encourages her students to participate, and they often place in this contest, so, Mrs. Libertor. The following students participated in the Patriots' Pen National Essay Contest this year. Nancy Armstrong...
Mr. Harvey, could Mr. Gurman and Ms. Mangano join you at the dais?
Yes. Nancy Armstrong. Adam Assad. Riley Borenstein. Rachel Burge. Jeremy Carr. Colin Chester. Jake Conklin. Angelica Dada. James Genovese. Millian Ingo. Paul Loftus. Cameron Jacobson. Rowena Kean. Kevin Kriakos. Eliana Madalaberg. Nicholas Martino. Jason Mock. Gino Ortiz. Eric Pollini. Abigail Polinski. Adriana Reggignato. Luke Roberto. Congratulations. Patrick Schaefer. Tyler Schur. Lucas Silva. Kalen Soto. Riley Stahl. Mahalia Suarez. Giuseppe Tranchina. Lady Rodriguez Galvez and Laura Rodriguez Galvez. And that was from Middle School North. Congratulations.
Maybe we can all get the kids in front for a picture? Terrific. Let's hear it again. Our next recognition, Mr. Isola?
We're moving to Middle School South, same program.
Same program.
Okay, we'd like, from Middle School South, we'd like to recognize Mr. Higgins, if he's here tonight, for encouraging his students to participate in this event. From Middle School South, we have Ruth Daley. Seth Friedman. Ayushi Kirmi. Daniel Mahovich. Connor Moran. Lauren Nagy. Mindy Preston. Sasha Renton. And Mason Wees. And Ruth Daley won first place, so congratulations to everyone on this.
Line them up for a photo? Thank you. Let's hear it again for them. Nice job.
Congratulations to all our winners. Outstanding work, and again, much to be prideful of from our middle school students in terms of their essay writing. At this time, we're going to move to our next recognition, our next program, and that's a program known as Biz Town that Newberry School students have participated in. I believe Ms... Well, I know that Ms. Gilligan and Ms. Oliver spearhead that effort at the school. I believe Ms. Gilligan is with us, and I know that we also have the principal, Dr. Quinn, and Mr. Greter, our assistant principal, vice principal, and is Ms. Oliver here? Yep, so the whole team is here, so...
And, Mr. Isola, I'd like to ask Dr. Low and Mr. Thor if they would join them at the podium?
That'd be awesome, so thank you, Dr. Low and Mr. Thor. And Jim, are you going to intro, or?
Sure.
You want to... Do you need this? Oh, I didn't see, is that Theresa? And Ms. Castellano is also there, I think?
Ms. Castellano, yeah.
Yeah, Ms. Castellano, there you go, okay. Is it Newberry? There you go.
All right, we started going to Biz Town just a couple of years ago. We discovered it through an email, and we looked into it, and what a fantastic financial literacy program they have there. So we took our G and T courses, classes, and our ECG kids from fourth and fifth grades, and went up and took over the town for the day, and the kids ran the whole thing from beginning to end. It was really a fantastic experience. We have a mayor, and a town council, and people running the banks, and CEOs of each of the stores, so they do a fantastic job, and they get a great learning experience out of it. And we do some financial literacy lessons during the year, leading up to it, too. So it's been a great find, and we are looking forward to going back again next year. So, with the following students, please come up. Vincent Agnello. Charlie Machnik. Jarell Nemgyrov. Danik Yaninas. Philip Christopher. Joshua Prusan. Madison Raphael. Vincent Meehan. Owen Viviani. Jake Dombowski. Colin Finnegan. Gabrielle Snowden. Danielle Ahmad. Tristan Bennett. Isabella Cardillo. Kevin Carr. Caleb Chester. Helen Coppola. Lisa DiUdo. Abigail Davy. Charlotte Davy. Brendan Deacon. Catherine Drury. Jesse Estamplair. Benjamin Fishman. Alexander Gariyev. Adrian Grady. Hannah Merkel. Cameron Newbert. Chinmai Palia. Ivy Peterman. Eric Prey. Corey Rivas. Ethan Zamat. Kennedy Brennan. Rodrigo Romani. Chinumso Etchizona. Henry Green. Alexander Hyzer. Brody Kaplan. Hannah Kim. Oliver Conapac. Michael Mangano. Eve Malshagan. Zack Metzger. Michaela Warren. Ervi Patel. Sophia Perez. Creedy Palomary. Sidharth Shankar. Luciano Torano. Mary Grace Vandergoet. Amelia White. Jack Whatgo. Anna Wallach. Jason Ben Mahidi. Nathan Poland. Logan Eck. Teresa Medina. Lila Parker. And Kaylee Rose Chan. And that's our group. Let's have a nice round of applause for this Biz Town group.
Howl leads, Mr. Isola, Howl leads.
Congratulations to our fine students of Newberry School.
Mr. Isola, I believe, do we have our Middle School South cheerleaders next?
You are on script, sir.
All right.
At this time, I'd like Ms. Sheila Johnson, Mr. Goodall, I know I saw you here, if you can come help present to our fine cheerleading squad from Middle School South. The Huskies did a great job.
I'd like Mr. Miller and Ms. Malley to assist.
I'd like to congratulate the Howell Husky Cheerleaders this year. They had a fantastic season. We competed at Howell High School in the end of February, and not only did they win their division, but they also scored one of the highest in the morning, earning them a grand champion award. These girls are so talented, so dedicated to their sport. They really did a fantastic job. I am so proud of all of them, so I'd like to call them up now. Marley Anello. Izzy Belfiori. Brenna Candle. Gabby Cortez. Haley Coyle. Sarah Dupont. Haley Fay. Mia Federovic. Ashley Goodman. Giselle Koaleski. Samantha Lorezsch. Madison Mathstein. Lexi Musico. Sophia Ramos. Alex Robertosi. Nicole Salma. Gia Sarin. Kate Schnappoff. Brianna Senator. Angelina Saletti. Kaylee Sosa. Lila Tormi. Lily Visagio. Olivia Visone. And Katie Zito.
Let's hear it for our Huskies. Get in the picture. They're ready for their photo op.
They're professionals. They're getting down in front.
Yeah, come on. Come on, the rest of you grownups, get in there.
Should the board members be doing flips?
We'll form a human pyramid next.
I say Al goes to the top of the pyramid.
You'll be the anchor. All right, let's hear it again for them.
Congratulations. Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for your dedication. I appreciate that. Sticking with Middle School South, and the irony is, tonight is their poetry night at their school. So I know Dr. Henick is at the school overseeing that program with Ms. Losinger and some of the staff there. But if Mr. Goodall can also join Ms. Claire Williams, no, I saw Ms. Williams, if she can come on up and talk briefly about this amazing accomplishment that three of our Middle School South students accomplished, it was really quite a story and something to be really proud of. Ms. Williams?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Last year, I had the opportunity to go to Oklahoma City Museum and Memorial, and it's amazing. It's so well done. And as I was leaving, I said, "Oh, I wish my students could see this." And one of the employees handed me information for the Hope Trunk, which is free of charge. FedEx pays for it to be shipped. And I brought it to Middle School South, and my eighth graders and I presented it to sixth and seventh graders. So this year, I follow them on Facebook, and they had an essay contest, and Mrs. Vella jumped on the chance to participate. We have three winners. They swept the seventh and eighth grade division for the nation, so I'm pretty excited. The winner was Ruth Daley. Now, while Ruth couldn't participate in the award ceremony there, she did record it for them.
Oh, yes. Ms. Okerson and Mr. Bon Giovanni, please, if they could sign.
Yes, sure. They streamed it live at the ceremony, because they wanted to make sure they honored our ladies. And Ange Kofi. Did Ange come? Yay, Ange. Ange won third place. And Sophia Jabber won second place. So our lady swept the whole division, so I'm really super proud of them. And go to Oklahoma City and see the memorial. It's amazing.
Let's hear it again for them. Well done. I think we have Steam Tank up next.
No, we're going to stick with Middle School South. I may be switching it. I apologize.
Ah, no, that's okay.
We're going to go with Middle School South's participation and outstanding job at the Donovan Catholic Scholastic Olympics. We have Mr. Goodall, our vice principal, here, and he will introduce the program and our wonderful students that did a great job there.
Yeah, each year, representatives from the Project Plus program from North and South actually participate in the Scholastic Olympics at Donovan Catholic High School. We have a strong tradition of doing very well. That was no exception this year. I want to thank Ms. Libertor, Mr. Higginson, Ms. Bender for doing a fine job in preparing all of our students. And we have some individual award winners, medal winners, that we're going to announce.
Mr. Goodall, you going to do North as well?
Um, yeah, I'll do both.
Awesome. Thank you, Ms. Libertor. I see you here, and this is all, so both schools participated.
I'd like Dr. Lowen, Mrs. Malley to join him at the podium if we could.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Dr. Lowen, Ms. Malley.
Okay, we're going to start with Middle School North. Kevin Churakos, math, gold medal. Mia Suarez, spelling, gold medal. Angelica Data, history, gold medal. Rowena Kanayan, spelling, silver medal. Lucas Silva, science, silver medal. Dubem Echenzona, music, silver medal. Luke Roberto, art, silver medal. Millian Ico, technology, bronze medal. And now for Middle School South. Dante Maurisi, science, gold medal. Sebastian Ortega, history, silver medal. Richie Shenton, spelling, bronze medal. Samuel Rodriguez, math, bronze medal. Brian Askin, science, bronze medal. Lauren Nagy, music, bronze medal. And once again, I would like to thank all the advisors who do a great job every year preparing our students, and great job to all who won medals in this year's competition.
Thank you, Mr. Goodall. Let's get a photo op. You know, Mr. Goodall said it quickly there, and I can't restate his comments any more loudly, but we have amazing students that make us pride, fill us with pride and do such great things. But it's the staff that dedicates their time and their devotion to the kids to give them these opportunities. And I see a lot of the kids nodding, and they're so appreciative of their teachers. And that combination of great kids and great staff is what separates Howell Township. Now, we're up to Steam Tank. Sir, who will be joining us from the dais?
Ms. Mangano and Mr. Gurman.
Awesome. Thank you so much. At this time, I'll ask Ms. Angle to come up and talk briefly about the Steam Tank and the great work that's happening in that area. So, Ms. Angle.
Thank you. Good evening. So the Steam Tank Challenge was created and sponsored by the New Jersey School Boards Association and the U.S. Army. It encourages students in the areas of STEM, so that stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. And the Steam Tank Challenge, for those of you that are familiar with the Shark Tank, it's very similar to that. It pits student teams against each other in a contest modeled after that television show. And the teams brainstorm, they create innovative projects, and present their innovations before a judging panel of entrepreneurs, business, and education leaders. This year, Howell had nine teams from across the district that were selected to compete in the regionals. And the winners of regionals, unfortunately, they haven't been announced. There's three regionals, and the last one is occurring, the north one is occurring this week. So hopefully next week, we'll hear if any of our Howell teams advance to the finals. And those individuals will be able to, if they're selected to go to finals, they will be presenting their innovations to the final round at the New Jersey School Boards Conference, which occurs at workshop in October. So to recognize these students, I'd really like to call down Mr. Rea and Mrs. Flugrath. Come on down from Ramtown. And also, Mr. Harvey, why don't you come down, representing Ramtown, and they can introduce their students and the innovative project that they worked on.
Hello, everybody. I'm here to announce our students from Ramtown for the Garbage Garage, which is a garbage sensor that allows public workers, when garbage is overflowing. How many of us have gone to stores where we see garbage cans just overflowing all over the place? So this invention will stop that and prevent litter from happening all over the world. So I would like to present certificates to Robert Daley. Evan Meddy. Andrew Protoline. And Morgan McClellan.
So I have to tell a little story. When we were at Steam Tank, it really is a challenging event. You could think of the television show Shark Tank, and you could only imagine that individuals that are presenting to entrepreneurs are getting really nervous. And I remember Mr. Daley was standing there, and he was eating. And I said, "Are you ready? Are you okay? Were we going to go on?" He said, "I'm so nervous. I'm stress eating." But they did an amazing job. Congratulations, guys.
Hear it again for them.
All right. Four other teams of the nine were from Newberry, so I'd like to call down the advisors and the administrators that really worked with the students and supported this program. We have from Newberry, we have Mrs. Castillon, Mrs. Oliver, Mrs. Gilligan, Mr. Greter, and Dr. Quinn.
Thank you. And I just want to echo what Ms. Angle said about Ramtown. They were a great, great group, and that was awesome to share that day with you all. We had four teams lucky enough to make it to the regionals in Steam Tank, and it was truly a team effort in our building. Mrs. Oliver, Ms. Gilligan, and Ms. Castillon worked tirelessly to really put together some time and really helped the kids develop some great ideas. We had four teams, as I said. Our first one was Smartware, which is a clothing app that has a GPS tracking device in it. And the idea behind that is to stop child abductions. And it was, you know, a really well-developed idea. The girls pitched it really well and sold it nicely, and very useful. So we're very proud of that first one. Our second one was Geo Shoes, which is an interchangeable sole of a shoe. So you could go from business out to hiking and all of those other things that you like to do without having to go to the shoe store, which, again, practical, great sales job by the boys that did that one. Our third project was My World, My World app. And in that app, that was an app developed to have students get more interested in volunteer work. They're able to kind of program different activities that they're able to go out and do, and really kind of link in terms of volunteers to an app, which, again, awesome stuff. And I'm always amazed at the app creation, because these kids are light years ahead of myself and us and their teachers most of the time as well. And our last one, Break-In Bunker. How could I forget? I carried the bunker around for like an hour. The Break-In Bunker was an actual bunker designed to stop your pesky siblings from swiping your stuff. And the group that did that did an amazing job of, again, selling that. They brought a prototype with them that we got to carry around with us and show off. And, again, just four wonderful projects. Couldn't be more proud of the students, and certainly couldn't be more proud of the staff that did that. So, without further ado, here we go. Hannah Kim. Kennedy Brennan. Amelia White. Eve Molshagan. Michaela Warren. Anya Wallach. Abigail Davy. And Charlotte Davy. Jesse Essent Plaire. Hannah Merkel. Chinmai Palia. Ivy Peterman. Isabella Cardillo. Kate Drury. Lisa Dayudo. Corey Rivas. Cameron Newbert. Kevin Carr. And Tristan Bennett. Congratulations. Great job, guys.
Let's hear it for them.
Congratulations, Newberry students. And last but not least, for the Steam Tank, Mr. Langerberger, the advisor, and I don't know if Mr. Goodall is still here, why don't you come up for South. Mr. Langerberger actually was the trailblazer for the Steam Tank Challenge, bringing it here to the district and having, was it three or four teams last year?
Three teams.
Three teams, and one of which actually went to the finals and placed third in the final competition.
As I take a moment, some of my colleagues here tonight, with regards to Steam Tank,
As I take a moment, Akio, some of my colleagues here tonight, with regards to Steam Tank, it is not always easy to come up with invention or innovation, coming up with that new idea that has not yet been thought about. But that was really just the first step, and probably the most challenging, but then is combining the talents of a wonderful group of students to really harness every one of their skill sets to present the idea. This year, we were very fortunate to have four teams from Howell Middle School South that brought some very unique ideas to the invention and innovation arena. The first was called Ben Bud. These students, or this team of students, created a fabric that would, actually, it was a rubber coating that would encapsulate the, um, the wire for your earbuds, and it would prevent it from getting tangled, which happens to all of us at one time or another. You take earbuds, you put them in the, put them in your pocket, you take them out. And it was a very creative solution to a problem that the judges really enjoyed. The second was Pet Ultra Guard. These students created a very unique fabric that repelled pet dander and pet hair to prevent the transference of allergies and hopefully prevent an allergic reaction from a student, let's say, that's allergic to cats, who comes in contact with that fabric. Safe Bus Plus. This idea was students combined a series of sensors, which monitored students sitting in their seat on the school bus, and would alert the driver if the child chose to unbuckle and provide warnings and an opportunity for the bus driver to pull over in order to ensure the safety of our students. We also had Smart Shampoo, which is a group of students who moved towards the hair care product line, in which they were using an integrated app with hair samples that would be used to properly address hair care, but also alert individuals to individual diseases that may be associated with the hair or scalp. Four very creative ideas, and we are all anxiously waiting at the edge of our seats to find out how we did this year, with optimism to hope that we bring one or more teams back to Atlantic City next year in October to present their ideas to the finalist judges. So at this time, what I'd like to do is take the moment to introduce those students and invite them down to receive their recognition for their contribution to Steam Tank this year. First, we have Dante Morsy. Connor Moran. Mindy Preston. Lauren Nagy. Brian Askin. Luke DeVita. Peyton Wesley. Jason DeMichael. Sam Rodriguez. Our next innovation will be how we can get them all here at the same time. Ryan Shenton. Tahir Ali. Ayushi Kirmi. Kayla Musto. Well, one of the things I'd like to add is that Howell Leeds is not just a hashtag, but really something we do every day. And only a half an hour ago, I was on a bus ride coming back from the Academic Bowl, in which those students we recognized at another time, but we came home with another armful of trophies from the Academic Bowl, and so that's going to be very exciting as well. All right, let's have just one more round of applause for our Steam Tank contestants.
Let's get a photo op, please. Picture, picture. Stand together. There we go. Mr. Isol, I believe TSA is coming up next. All right. Will be Mrs. Ogerson and Mr. Thor, please.
Oh, awesome. Thank you, Ms. Ogerson.
Band with the tangled headphone cord there. I think he's your first customer, Mr. Langenberger. While they come to the podium, I just want to say, this board is so appreciative to all the staff members that take all the time and energy and pour it into our kids to help them achieve. Everything we see tonight on behalf of our kids wouldn't be possible without those dedicated staff members that we see here tonight. So again, thank you.
Okay, well, staying in line with the theme of science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, students that are involved in our TSA program, that stands for Technology Student Association Program, attended the annual TSA conference. It's a state competition where students compete in events and challenges that are designed around science, technology, engineering, and mathematics principles. And combined this year, our TSA chapters for North and South came home with a total of That's quite impressive, especially since there's 33 events. So you can see how many place winners we really did have. There were place for, we had first-place winners in coding, as well as third grade, first place in children's stories, and first place in construction challenge. So, Mr. Sanasek, if you need anybody to help you with building anything, he, they can definitely help you. So this year, 37 students will be going. There were more students that qualified, but we do have 37 students that have committed to go to compete at the national level now. They will be competing with students around the nation and other countries, and those students will be competing in Atlanta, Georgia. I want to thank the Board of Education. You always support this program. The administration, thank you for your support. And at this time, I'll call up Mr. Langenberger and Mrs. Sales. They are our advisors for the TSA program. They're really the individuals that guide the students, help them with their projects, and each year, they help the students bring home trophies.
This was a wonderful year once again for Howell Township. I feel like I was just up here speaking a few moments ago. But this was a wonderful year for Howell Township, because one of the amazing things is when we sit at this, when we're at the award ceremony for TSA, even though North and South do compete against each other for places, it's always wonderful to see and listen to how often Howell Township is recognized as either first, second, or third place, in some cases first and second, in some cases first, second, and third, in many of the events that are presented at states. Now, we've been at this competition, or participating in this competition since it's really, since its inception. And Howell consistently shows how strong our students are academically, but also, well beyond that, in the field of STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math. These are kids who step up and above. And I know that we all lead very busy lives, but the students we're going to be recognizing tonight truly show a dedicated effort, an investment. And TSA, while it's about technology, it's about leadership, and leadership, taking that leadership in their own lives. And all of the students recognized tonight have shown exemplary examples of taking that leadership and really making an investment in themselves. So we're exceptionally proud of them. What we'd like to do is, we're going to do this just a little differently, in that we're going to ask all the North and South students in TSA just to come over and stand down here, and then we'll recognize you one at a time. So if you're here for TSA tonight, please, North and South, come down and stand right over here.
Nashville is brave.
Nashville is a victory.
It is. Well, this year is Atlanta. As you can see by the number of students here, we did certainly very well with TSA this year. And we are looking forward to Atlanta, Georgia this year at Nationals. This is the first year it's hosted in Atlanta, Georgia. All right, at this time, I'm going to be recognizing the students from Middle School South. So when you hear a name, you're just going to come forward, you're going to get your certificate, and then we just asked that you stand on the other side, and then we'll do Middle School North. First up, we have Lido Oracal. Katherine Belina. Oops, I'm sorry, I didn't mention, Lido was third place in video game design. Katherine is second place leadership strategies. Cassidy Brennan, video game design, third place. Matt Cedar, coding, third place. Ruthie Daley, forensic technology, third place. Samuel Fertal, coding, third place. Arden Jaghedi, construction challenge, first place. Sophia Jabber. Biotechnology, third place. Kayla Melendez. Biotechnology, third place. Oops, I'm sorry. Dan Miklovich. Video game design, third place. Connor Moran, video game design, third place. Kelly Nolan, leadership strategy, second place. Mindy Preston, construction challenge, first place. Noah Reed, leadership strategy, second place. Sasha Renton, first place, children's stories. John Stillwagon, construction challenge, first place. Jenna Strauss, biotechnology, third place. Mason Weiss, CAD Foundations, first place. Beata Wallach, forensic technology, third place. Brian Yee, dragster, first place. And the other South? I think I got everyone. Okay, terrific. Ms. Sales, come on over.
Thank you. Okay. TSA could not be successful without the help of our officers. So I'm going to call one of my officers up for a brief few words. Where are you? Okay. She'll introduce our program.
Hello, my name is Abigail Plansky, and I am the current TSA president. I would like to thank the board members for recognizing us, and welcome to you. At TSA, we provide many opportunities to developing leadership skills, working together, sharing ideas, and participating in many activities. Competitions are a big part of TSA. This year, the state competitions, we are proud to bring home 19 awards, and now we would like to recognize them. Thank you.
I'm going to start with, we had a few achievement awards. This is for doing extra outside of TSA, community service, leadership practices outside school. Michael Barron, Bronze Achievement Award. Do I give it to him? Sahil Mahir, Bronze Achievement Award. Abigail Polianski, Bronze Achievement Award. Yeah, because she'll be up a few times. Anushka Gupta, Bronze Achievement Award. Brianna Jumadnik, Bronze Achievement Award. I asked you that. Wait, stay here. Brianna Jumadnik, Silver Achievement Award as well. That's 200 hours of service. Bronze is 100 hours of service, silver is 200 hours. Abigail Polianski, Silver Achievement Award. Michael Barron, TSA Honor Society. Abigail Polianski, TSA Honor Society. I'll get it, I'll get it. Brianna Jumadnik, TSA Honor Society. Sahil Mahir, TSA Honor Society. Dubem Etchizona, first place in the state for essay. Rowena Kanayan, first place in the state for essay. Angelika Data, first place in the state for essay. Giuseppe Tranchina, first place for essay. Abigail Polianski, first place for essay. That was our teams event. That's a separate event that we do through TSA, and the following people also participated in teams. I don't think he's here anymore. Kenneth Etchizona, third place in the state for essay. Nathan Schindler, third place for essay. Philip Gomi, third place in the state for essay. Brianna Jumadnik, third place for essay. Spencer Buttram, third place in the state for essay. Jake Conklin, third place in the state for essay. Jason Mock, third place in the state for essay. Okay. James Genovese, challenging technology issues, third place. Michael Barron, first place for chapter team. Dubem Etchizona, first place for coding. Brianna Jumadnik, third place for community service video. Rowena Kanayan, third place, community service video. Angelika Data, third place, community service video. Michael Barron, third place, community service video. Rowena Kanayan, first place, essays in technology. Angelika Data, essays on technology, second place. Rowena Kanayan, second place, medical technology. Angelika Data, second place, medical technology. Michael Barron, second place, promotional design. Second place Promotional Design. James Genovese. First place STEM Animation. Daniel Zalewansky. Second place Structural Engineering. Bridge Design. That was a tough one. Second place System Control Technology. Nathan Schindler. Third place Tech Bowl. Kenneth Etchizona. Third place Tech Bowl. Dubem Etchizona. Second place Website Design. Abigail Polianski. First place Digital Photography. Sonya Panjwani. First place Chapter Team. Kazim Pajwani. I think they're related. First place Chapter Team. Will Daly. First place Chapter Team. Colin Chester. First place Chapter Team. Robert Protillo. First place Chapter Team. Abigail Polianski. Third place Community Service Video. Sarum Memum. Sarum Memum. Third place Community Service Video. Nick Martino. Second place Flight. Xavier Sanchez. Second place Junior Solar Sprint. Spencer Buttram. Second place Junior Solar Sprint. Xavier Sanchez. Second place Mass Production. Julian Sanchez. Second place Mass Production. Julia Teo. Third place Mass Production. Brianna Jumadnik. Second place Medical Technology. Nick Martino. First place STEM Animation. He's not here. Sivana Shankar. Second place Structural Engineering. Anushka Gupta. Second place System Control Technology. Philip Golmi. Third place Tech Bowl. Anushka Gupta. First place Technical Design. Sivana Shankar. First place Technical Design. Paul Loftus. Second place Website Design. Lucas Silva. Second place Website Design. Giuseppe Tranchina. Second place Website Design. Okay. And that concludes our awards. Running out of room. Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Everybody try to come in for a picture or else somebody's taking a big step back. Somebody take a big step back.
All right, TSA students, why don't you jump up on the stage? We'll have some up on the stage and some in the front so then we can actually fit all of you.
Mr. Sanisak, I would like to ask if we could have the board go into exec.
Yes. We only, please note the resolution printed in the agenda and the personnel and residency have been resolved, so the only item this evening is the HIB and we can go right into this back room.
That's right.
So the board will be in executive session in the faculty lunchroom.
Board will convene to exec. Over there.
If I can have a mover and a second or for the minutes?
Move it.
Second. Moved by Mr. Bonjavani, second by Mr. Miller. May I take that around?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjavani?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Germin?
Yes, on the executive session minutes for March 23rd, I will abstain.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Malley?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano? Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Thor?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
The minutes are approved. Nine votes in favor and none opposed with the abstention noted for the record. The correspondence that the board has received will be noted for the record. It's now time for the board president's comments. President of the Board, Mr. Timothy O'Brien, your comments, sir.
Thank you. Obviously, we've had a very, very busy evening and I will keep my remarks brief, but I do feel it's important for me to recognize the fact that for the last hour and a half, we have spent that time productively, enjoyably, recognizing, I don't know how many students we had, Mr. Sanisak.
I believe there were 200 certificates prepared this evening, sir. I'm not sure how many made it and didn't make it.
Let me tell you something. A statement on public education was made tonight. If you see it, you look at it, excellence is achieved here in this district. We look at the fact that so many of our students, such an incredible group of young people representing our community, were recognized tonight for achievements that range from scholastic to athletic, creative expression, thoughtful, intelligent, young people who, you know, give you hope, right, for the future because they're way ahead of where we were, in my opinion, when we were their age. So I credit the staff, the parents, students themselves. But most of all, I am so proud of our district because when you look at this, this is the culmination of work and focus on student achievement, which is what this board is always keeping first and foremost at the top of every list. And so I want to thank everyone in the district, the staff, students, for helping share their success with us tonight and allowing us to honor them. And Mr. Isola, I'm sure you have a few more things to say about that in your report. We're also wearing blue tonight. I'll leave that to Mr. Isola to talk a little bit about, but it's an important topic. And I thank every board member for sharing and supporting, answering Mr. Isola's call on that. With that, I will turn it over to you, sir, for your report.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Sanisak. So just some quick updates this evening and an opportunity to echo some of the things that Mr. O'Brien, our board president, said about the outstanding opportunity tonight was to celebrate our students, our staff, our community, our school district. And what you saw tonight, and unfortunately, the room's empty here tonight now after the recognition and the adjournment to exec, what you saw here tonight is absolutely a statement about what's happening in our classrooms in all 12 of our school buildings and the enthusiasm and the excitement that is shared among staff and students. As I said earlier, it is the defining factor for us. It is what separates us. I receive, I often receive phone calls from colleagues or when I see them at meetings, you know, TSA, for example, you know, we're following you, we're trying to get up there and see if we can dent into some of your accomplishments in that area. And that was just something organic that happened over time. And when it comes from students and staff and it's not a directive, you tend to get a lot more energy and enthusiasm around that. So sometimes as boards of educations and as senior administrators, we all have to remember, you know, get the right people in place and then let them go. Get out of their way and let them be the great individuals that they are. And we see the success there. And then you nurture that and you support that. So I couldn't be prouder as I sit here this evening and to celebrate all the wonderful things that you just saw and so many more. During the month of April, it's Autism Awareness Month. We had some really good dialogue around that today at our Student Board of Education Day and I was so pleased to hear and I think we'll be talking about that later on. So I certainly won't steal the thunder. So we wore a blue today. We kind of did a blue out or a lighted up blue. And I want to be clear because I did receive an email from an individual and somebody received a response to a tweet. There's apparently, unbeknownst to me, there's apparently a little bit of a rift within the autistic community as it relates to messaging. So let me be perfectly clear. Our request here in Howell Township was to bring awareness and acceptance of individuals who have autism, the families that work with that, the school districts that work with that. Knowledge is power and we need to be a school district that has acceptance, that has knowledge, that has awareness. It isn't about one organization versus another and I'm not here to support any political agenda. I'm here to support families and children. So I thank all of us for participating, but I did want to be on record as saying our attempt here wasn't about an organization or about X versus Y. It was about raising awareness and acceptance. And that was spoken pretty intelligently about from our Student Board of Ed today. So we'll hear more about that. But I'm so proud that our district did participate and, you know, from wearing specific shirts in certain schools to, you know, celebrating some of the progress that we're all making in this area because it's critically important. So I wanted to take a minute to mention that. On the same vein, next month, as we've done for a number of years now, Howell Township participates in Paint the Town Pink, which is primarily, you know, women's health, women's breast cancer awareness. And will, the, last year, we did it at our second May board meeting and the town had picked a different day and I thought it was most appropriate to do it during a board meeting. Well, I'm happy to report that in our communication with the municipal folks, they asked us what date would our board meeting be and what date worked for us. So they allowed us once again for Howell to lead a school district and they were gracious enough to mark the 23rd of May as the town-wide pink out or Paint the Town Pink. So very pleased to be participating in that. We have two meetings in May. That'll be our second meeting. I've spoken to the board and to the public. We'll be starting to push this next week. The Freehold High School, School District, Regional School District will be doing a parent information session on vaping and e-cigarettes. And we recognize and we spoke about this last night at Community Interactions, the important message and knowledge that is needed by parents around this. There is, you know, vaping and e-cigarettes and the use of these devices to smoke illegal substances as well as tobacco, I suppose for some, is very alarming and it is rearing its head in high schools across our state and yes, in fact, in our middle schools. So we need to get educated about this, not turn a blind eye, a blind eye and not, you know, brush anything under the rug. We have kids' health at risk and we must get educated and support important parent messaging on this topic. So we'll be promoting this and we, you know, Mr. Sampson was gracious enough to open his doors to our community. The more parents he felt that got knowledgeable about this, the better they can work with their students and perhaps prevent future high school students that will be in his school district from partaking in such behaviors. So that's Monday, the 25th. It's 6:30 right at Colts Tech High School, right down on Five Points Road. So, you know, it's on my calendar. I hope to see you all there and spread the word about that. Certainly, we've heard a lot about the work surrounding Future Ready. We are moving to the next level. We are in the process of applying for and being evaluated to see if we meet the rigorous standards of what is now a brand new level of silver level Future Ready certification. As you know, all 12 of our schools have proudly earned the certification, the basic certification program, which was year one of that program. They are now building some layers into it, silver. I'm sure gold will follow soon. But we felt we've, you know, walked the path this far that it's important for us to continue to, you know, walk down this journey and make sure that we are recognizing our staff and our students and our building leadership as well as the district for the work in this area because we are above, head and shoulders above regular school districts that just are not as far advanced in this area. So we're really proud of that. Just some update items from me. We certainly did some recognitions during this month. It was vice principals and school media specialist recognition during the month of April. We were proud to certainly do that through our social media forums as well as communicating directly with those individuals. You know, it seems like there's, every day is a something day these days. So we try to stay on top of that to take those opportunities to celebrate and we're really proud that we're doing that on behalf of our staff. The Howell Township Education Foundation has two important events coming up. Tomorrow night, right here in this room, will be the Evening of the Stars. It's a really wonderful program planned and the foundation is honoring our school district for becoming Future Ready certified. So we're kind of the headliner there. And then there's Mr. Ackerman, Officer McBride, our school resource officer is one of the honorees. I'm doing this from memory. I may look over. Diane Schmidt, a former principal from Howell. And there was one, other one.
Hind.
Hind, right, yes. Who was an educator himself and a Howell product. So we're really proud to have that slate of individuals being honored along with the schools for their work with Future Ready. So again, if you're available tomorrow night, it's a free event right here at Middle School North and it should really be a nice thing. Their second event that's coming up is on May 19th. It's at Middle School South. It's a color run. That's their big fundraiser event. They used to do the Race to Ed- a color run. That's their big fundraiser event. They used to do the Race to Educate. They've turned it into a color run for fun and try to raise some funds through that process. The, both the HDEA, the Howell Township Education Association, along with the HDAC, but certainly Mr. Augustine, who's in the audience tonight, he may be hard to pick out. He's been doing a great job promoting it, and I know the foundation sent their gratitude and wanted to express that. So, hopefully, we have a great turnout, and it's a fun, you know, morning of, you know, silliness and laughter and an opportunity to raise funds. All those funds come right back to our students and staff for innovative projects. So, their sole agenda at the foundation is to support the education of the children of this township through supporting staff with innovative projects. So, we, hopefully, will have great support there. The other conversation that has been active within our educational community was the school calendar. So, there's two things surrounding here that I'll put out, and if it's the board's pleasure to have dialogue on that, they are certainly welcome to do so. The extending, extended school year now, this year, in the 17, 18, as we have articulated rather clearly, we have three makeup days to do, and those days will be June 25, 26, and 27. They'll be half-days of school. The previous end of the school year was the 20th, 21st, and 22nd. Those were, those were half-days. They'll now be full-day sessions, and then those last three days become the half-days. Graduation is now scheduled, as we also announced, to be, the first date will be Tuesday, the 26th, as an outside ceremony. If there is inclement weather and we're unable to do that, we will move the ceremony to the following day, the last day of school, the 27th. And, at that time, if there is still inclement weather, the programs would be moved inside where we would have to limit tickets for individuals. So, that's the current modifications. And, our add-back days due to school emergency closures have, are articulated on the calendar and were approved last spring when the city, the seated board at that time voted to approve it. On tonight's agenda is the 18, 19 calendar that we were able to receive feedback from, from our key stakeholders and others. And, based on the feedback that we received, my original proposal has been modified, and you're all aware of that. We spoke about that at Community Interaction. I think it's a fairly responsive calendar to the feedback that we received. I pride myself on gathering that feedback, and our senior administrative team works diligently with me on this. Never a perfect calendar, you know, not with 6,000, approximately 6,000 students and all of their parents. There will always be folks that think it's a great calendar, and there will be folks that, you know, want a certain week off or a day off or a couple of days off or a four-day weekend for Memorial Day. So, there's always folks that, that will say it's not the best calendar. But, I think the calendar that's before you this evening, and we shared in public last night, certainly was responsive and addressed the concerns that we heard. Certainly, starting September 12th was a divergent thought. I will continue to think differently about things to see if we could find avenues to explore that are beneficial. I heard loud and clearly that that late start date was not something that folks were in favor of. There still is a lot of misunderstanding about process out there. We continue to talk to everyone who wants to learn about that and hear about that. For example, start the children two days earlier and end two days earlier. That's not a simple, simple math formula. It seems logical, but when you actually work within a school district and you understand how school districts work, there are minimum student days, and there are contractual days required as, in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement between the board and the associations that are on the property. So, it's never really, you know, just do this. There's always rules and procedures that govern superintendents when designing calendars, and that's why calendars look different from town to town because their collective bargaining agreements are different. So, you have to, you have to manage that situation as best you could. But, I'm really pleased with the calendar. I think it was a absolute good response to the feedback I got. I, year in and year out, for my fourth year now, and certainly Dr. Golden prior to me, always solicited feedback from the key stakeholders, and I want to be on record on announcing who those key stakeholders are. They are the Board of Education, all nine members. They are the Howell Township Administrative Council, the Association for the Principals and Supervisors and Assistant Vice Principals, and they are the Academic Council Unit of the HDEA, which is a unit that, a council that meets on a regular basis. They meet with senior administration, as well as HTAC members, and we have an opportunity there to talk and hash things out, and it's really a productive meeting. It is not, it is not the 6,000 Facebook users that have children in our district. While I think it is important to give people an opportunity to voice their concern, and I have answered every single email that I received, we cannot be responsive to 6,000 individual desires. We talk, oh, I, forgive me, and then really other important key stakeholder group is the PTA, PTO, President's Council. Those are the parent organizations within the schools, so that every unit of our community has the opportunity to provide feedback. So, yes, the calendar was designed. It was shared with those stakeholders. The feedback that I got from those stakeholders and some others was very meaningful to me. I was reflective about that, provided a calendar that I think meets the needs of our school district while answering the concerns of those. Always first, meeting the needs of our school district, though. Mr. O'Brien, you wanted to?
I just want to let, say that, one, the reason why, and it's clear from your explanation, why the board doesn't get involved in construction of the calendar. We can't possibly rise to the level of that task because we don't have the visibility and understanding of, as you pointed out, the mechanics of working with the district with so many moving parts and so many things at stake, the most important thing being student achievement and accomplishing the mission. So, it's always been, and very, very clear, that the calendar is the responsibility of you and your team to put together for this board's approval. As long as it follows the policy guidelines laid out and the needs of the district, it's important that you have our complete and total support and confidence in that. And, it's illustrated by the fact that, as you pointed out, you make an extra effort, as did your predecessor, Dr. Golden, to reach out to the appropriate stakeholders who also share your insight, guidance, and have skin in the game. So, unfortunately, at this particular juncture, we had a brief detour into social media where it came out prematurely. It wasn't completed. It wasn't finished. The process had not yet been to, for you to get the feedback from all the different stakeholders. It was an idea, and I applaud you for the idea because divergent thinking is one of the reasons why we are very proud to continually say Howell leads. Divergent thinking is part of the process that led us to many creative endeavors that brought together tonight, the success that we saw recognizing over several hundred students. So, the key is that keep doing what you're doing. The board supports you on that. It's important for the public to know that we trust you because you've demonstrated that desire to reach out to all the key stakeholders, to be open and willing to, even if you have an idea that you think is important, if you get feedback that you respect and you think is helpful, you're willing to modify that for the benefit of the district. So, you've demonstrated that consistently, as did Dr. Golden, and I think the public needs to understand that the level of interaction that this district gives and the amount of importance we place on getting feedback from our community, I think is unparalleled among districts. I've heard it from so many other people who work in other fine districts that do a great job, but don't even come close to the level of community interaction that we have. We take that for granted here, but we shouldn't. And, the public needs to understand that, and that'll continue. I know your team is committed to that, and this board is committed to that. And, I applaud you for going through that process so diligently to get to the best possible calendar we could get for our kids.
And, thank you for your kind words, Mr. O'Brien. And, none of that, none of my statements earlier or just previously should be misconstrued to say that I'm not willing to listen to people outside those stakeholder groups because I've done that on a regular basis. The fact of the matter is, when something gets put out on a social media forum with not the complete list of facts, it, or even the context in which it's described to be or should be, it creates the rumor mill, and people, like, a lot of folks emailed saying that was an approved calendar. It was never an approved calendar, as you know, because you never voted on it as a board. So, unfortunately, the way in which information is sometimes shared on social media, and is not, I don't mean it, no one's doing something to be irresponsible, but it creates to a lack of understanding, and then we're kind of chasing ourselves to fix rumors that are just unfactual. And, you know, that gets concerning. However, the good news is that we did follow our process, and I'm excited to present to you tonight the calendar that we shared at Community Interaction, and I've shared with you. And, I think it does really meet the needs of our school district's objectives, as well as respond to the many concerns that were shared with us. So, that's on the agenda for this evening for your approval. My final item this evening, as always, is the monthly report of suspensions. And, since our last report, the March report, basically, is 13 suspensions, and that's coming around for your review. I think that is down from our March months, our March 2018, I'm sorry, March 2017. So, that's a good little trend. As we look where we were a year ago to now, just for information purposes, we're like two or three ahead of where we were. So, pretty consistent in terms of the discipline that's being dispensed as it compares to last year. But, this month, in March, we did a little bit better. So, that's good news. Hopefully, that trend will continue in April. We'll let you know how that looks in May. So, thank you for your time, and that concludes my report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Isola.
Thank you. It is now time for committee reports, committee and liaison reports. Mr. President?
All right. I will start on my right. Let's see. Yes. But, they never know where I'm going to go. I might go left. I might go right. You don't know. But, Ms. Mangano, I know you are our Township Planning Board, Zoning Board Liaison. Any updates for us?
Okay. So, on April 5th, it was approved by the Howell Planning Board to have the construction of the apartment complex at the corner of West Farms Road and Fort Plains and Route 9. After all the testimony on April 5th, Mayor Berger, Deputy Mayor Robert Castro, Vice Minister Chairman Brown, and Board members of Howell County Schools, people have qualified to put down the schedule, save by the Howell County Apartments. The development will now move forward with a plan to construct the nine-two-story buildings containing a total of 72 apartments. All of these apartments will qualify for affordable housing and be rented at below-market rates to individuals and families who income beneath the guidelines. There was a little concern by the Howell Fire Bureau, will be not support this project. They just support the rest of the property. They see with like the port road vehicles and whole class, really a sense of that for our parents protected, used up against the building, serving the public. Two years ago, when this project was brought to the planning board, it was stated that veterans would have preference and priority, as well as pets would be allowed into those apartments. That story has now changed, and they are saying that that is not the case anymore. So, going forward, I think that we, as a board and as administration, are going to have to look how this affects our school system with all these new apartments coming and children. The roads over there are pretty crowded. I do live over there. It's going to be a big impact. So, I think it's something that can be a little scary, to be honest. That's my opinion. That's not anything else but my opinion. So, basically, they're good to go, and they're going to get started on that.
All right. So, the impact of this will take place, what, in about two years? Is that how long it'll take for the construction?
Yeah, I think it's going to take approximately two years.
So, operations and Mr. Sanisak, your office can keep an eye on this in terms of its impact on our transportation staffing. And, fortunately, due to the fact that we had the reconfiguration, we have flexibility in some of our facilities now where we can handle a change in the population. But, it's good to stay aware of it. Thank you for your report.
Which schools would that impact?
I believe the areas, Mr. Sanisak, right now that are covered by the project, that would be sending to, what schools would the, would the West Farms Road project be sending to if they were to come in as elementary?
Sorry, Ms. Mangano?
Gribbling Schools.
Yeah, there are Gribbling, Memorial, North sending district.
Right. What are Gribbling and Memorial running at right now in terms of capacity?
I don't have an exact percentage, but there, as you've pointed out, there is space. It's part of what the reconfiguration built into all of our schools.
So, there is a buffer and there's space and?
Yeah, those schools will be able to handle some growth. There's no doubt about that. Again, that was part of our work and our design of reconfiguration. But, be caution if you take a look at stuff because while the numbers look low, we have a lot of special class programs in those buildings, and they take up the usage of a room, even though it's, you know, maybe not 25 children, we still need that space. So, the pure view of the number of enrollments in that school would not match, oh, you would think there's tons of room. There is room. We can handle it, I believe, you know, unless those numbers grow from what our, what our demographer would indicate to us, housing development of nine two-stories, 72 units, is it, Ms. Mangano, I believe? You know, so, we can certainly, we believe confidently we can handle that. But, just caution, when you look at those two schools specifically, we have a lot of special class programs utilizing the space wisely. But, certainly, there is room for growth in both of those buildings.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks. Any other questions on that or comments? Seeing none? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Finance Committee met on April 12th. Mrs. Litzbauer from NW Financial Services was present, who gave us an overview of the bond refunding process, as well as Mr. Josh Costo and Jeff Norton, who were from DCO Energy and ESCO, who will be overseeing the ESIP process. Ms. Litzbauer, yeah, spoke to ESIP being budget-neutral. The projects, as we know, will be started this summer and will conclude in 18 months. All the projects that start must be concluded by law within the 18-month period. All the resolutions which were on the agenda this evening were approved unanimously by the committee. Ms. Engel and Mr. Aquino from the OIC Departments were present. They presented their department budgets to the committee, and they gave highlights on maintaining our Future Ready schools, as well as continuing and maintaining of security for the network. Digital learning tools, Schoology, Parent Portal, printer consolidation, and copy or redeployment were included in this discussion. They discussed their department budget for next year. Inclusive were the cost increases for many of the licenses, aging projectors, and website compliance to be ADA compliant. The committee did discuss whether advocacy should consider communicating with the legislators regarding pending legislation about state funding decisions. The committee requested that Transportation come in to discuss the budget with us. So, busing's going to be one of the areas of discussions. Probably after the budget is completed, we'll bring them in to discuss going forward. This evening, we will need to pull items 6,017.8, 17.9, and 17.10 for a special vote because those will require a two-thirds vote of the board. Those are the resolutions and ordinance. Mr. Sanisak, you want to explain to the board why one of them is an ordinance, which is not normal for our board?
Yes, and Mr. Wooters can, I'm sure, that the bond refunding is done through an ordinance, even though it's not our typical method. It kind of mimics the municipality, and it's an introduction this evening and then a vote at the public hearing for the ordinance. Mr. Wooters, anything to add?
No. It's just, for reasons known only to the state legislature, when they enacted the laws that govern how you approve bond issuances, not realizing that the laws that govern how you approve bond issuances, not realizing that Board of Education don't issue ordinances, they still wrote a law that requires you to write an ordinance. So it's, and it's different, just in case somebody raises the question, which you haven't, but this board, like any other board, can issue basically two types of bonds. One's a capital bond that normally requires the approval of the electorate. Do you want to go out and go to the school, you don't get a lot of funding from the government, but it's not likely. The only time you don't need to do that is if it is funding a bond, meaning you have one of the students who didn't issue, and you're now going to take out a bond to pay that bond. And the process that we're following here is a refunding process that involves the, this ordinance. The reason why it's a refunding process is because when the legislature passed the ESRP statute, and ESIP is a legitimate program, it's like a program. They determine, because they're basically going to be paying the bond payments through improvement, say, through energy services. They looked at it as a loophole, and they didn't want, actually, you have to go out to the administration and directly have it approved. So they structured the ESRP, which is what you're going to issue here, as refunding, is if you're paying off the bond issue, that you're going to have to stop the process. It's two steps to like, to adopt a resolution that includes the funding on ordinance, to establish a common theory that the funding on ordinance, which is on the same. You're also passing a resolution approving an application to the local finance board, which is required, must get approved from the local finance board, issue this kind of bond, a momentary proven authority through their visors to that for us, so we're required that to still be on the basis. And thirdly, there's a resolution for reimbursement. Normally, if you're issuing a bond, in order, there's a lot of rules to make sure that you keep the tax, the, you know, the tax, the aspects of it in place. One of those requirements is you can't, you could only use bond proceeds for, to pay for project costs incurred after the issuance of the bond. However, there are certain situations under the IRS code where if you adopt a resolution before you issue the bond that says, "We are authorizing to reimburse ourselves for expenses that we've incurred prior to the issuance of the bond," then you can do that, and it doesn't affect the tax exempt status of the bond. That's what you're doing today. So you're authorizing yourself to pay yourself back for expenses you're paying now for these projects with bond proceeds once the bonds are issued.
Thank you, Mr. Wooters. And to, at the end of the day, the beautiful thing about this is that by being able to do this as a board, we're gonna be able to fund the ESIP projects that include, as has been pointed out earlier, the opportunity to give air conditioning to every one of our classrooms in the district, while still maintaining a budget-neutral impact to our district. Which I think, from our standpoint, we're happy to have the mechanism to do that, in order to be able to accomplish that, because I think a bond referendum to the community is a very complicated and costly affair. It takes a lot of energy and time, and isn't always guaranteed to pass. While, on the other hand, we can, you know, implement this bond issue, and the refunding, as it's called, and get a lot of great work done, and still be frugal, and, you know, prudent with our budget. So it's a win-win for the taxpayer and for the district. Thanks.
Yeah, there's also legislation, just, well, in all of the essays of students were made, she, this, over, the consistent theme throughout those, there's this, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, in this case, the legislatures actually came up with a good mechanism. That makes
sense, and it works for our students and our taxpayers at the same time. So that's a home run. Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Miller. I apologize, you may.
And our next meeting is going to be on April 23rd, where we hope to finalize the budget to bring to use for the public hearing. One final note, though, is we are monitoring the legislators' meetings with this budget, because every day in the paper, we're seeing different things. I believe it was today, we saw that they might be going back to the numbers back to '07, I believe it was?
Well, they said '08, and again, I'm not sure whether they mean '07, '08, or '08, '09. They used just '08 as, in a calendar year. So we're still waiting for that other shoe to, the other other shoe to drop. I believe that the phrase that the new commissioner used was, "They were going to modernize the formula." So we're still hopeful that that means they'll give us at least what they announced at the Governor's Budget Address, but we're monitoring it very closely. And it's a very tough position for all the governor and the legislators to be in.
Absolutely.
Last thing is, the Monmouth County School Boards did hold the eighth grade dialogue at Sutherd. I want to thank yous for allowing us to use the building. It was an excellent night. We had the two students that represented, sorry, South and North, they did an excellent job representing our district. Thank you for us getting Howe Police Department out there to assist with the parking. And on May 7th, we have our county meeting at Coltsneck, starting at six. We do have three board members from our district receiving awards that evening, so if you get a chance to go out, it is on the agenda this evening. I asked Ms. George to place it on there. So if you want to attend, please let her know, so she can register you. And that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, I want to thank you for, that was a great event, too. I was fortunate to be able to come in. You and Mr. Banjivani, you know, did a great job, among others. I just felt that it was incredible to see the way you interacted with the students, and how you were able to.
[coughs]
Well done. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Mr. Banjivani?
Community Interaction met last night. Mr. Isola's already talked about all the things that we talked about at Community Interaction. The only other thing was just the discussion in terms of continuing to try to build attendance. Last night's meeting was held at Panera to see if we would, at seven o'clock, to see if we would get any additional attendance. We did have one additional parent show up that would not probably have been there anyway. The next meeting is scheduled for May 15th. Currently, on the schedule, it's for Taunton, but we'll have discussion and see whether it's worth trying another facility in another part of town, and another time, and see what that brings or doesn't bring.
Did we ever look into getting things like Eventbrite or Facebook as part of our, getting the word out through invites and creating events?
Haven't looked at it. I think we should. I do, I want to commend, you know, Mr. Banjivani for thinking outside the box and trying to do it in a new location, and I want to see us keep trying that.
I think so, and I think.
Right around town.
Now that we have a Facebook page, you know, up and running, what about looking at ways to expand our awareness build-out of these events through, because I get, I've gotten invitations to events through social media that I might not have gotten, you know, sometimes you pick up the mail, and you may not always get every invitation, or it may not jump to the front of the pile. Too many bills in front of it, so you don't get to that. But on the other hand, if you're there, and you, we complain about social media sometimes, and justifiably so, because it can do a lot of damage, but it can also do a lot of good, and there's a good side to it as well.
Not to really belabor a part of the discussion Mr. Isola had already, but, you know, we did talk last night about whether it be Twitter, whether it be Facebook, the different ways of getting out information. And the calendar, of course, became part of the conversation in terms of how we get that information out. So at the meeting, we both encouraged folks to look for the official ways that we distribute information. And certainly, we continue to constantly invite folks, not just to that meeting, but to every meeting. Let them know that, you know, look at the calendar, see what's there, find out what's of interest to you, and please feel free to join us at any meeting that we, you know, we encourage, and we learn from new voices, so.
Yeah, there you go. I mean, well, just a thought, I mean, as we go forward, we have the technology, as they say. So why not see where constructively we can use it? Obviously relying on our administrative team to help us stay in the rails.
It's no problem. We certainly have the capability and the will to do so. I believe, I know, I don't know if I did, I believe Mr. Banjivani did tweet the meeting, that it was there. So, you know, we have a handful of followers there, but certainly, no problems spreading the word. I think the more people that would attend the meeting and engage in the dialogue is certainly important, and.
Yeah, I've just, I've been looking at it from the corporate side, the business perspective, on LinkedIn and things like that, utilizing that platform. And it seems like a lot of our parents are utilizing Facebook and other, and Twitter. So whatever vehicles.
But you know, there's certainly a real plus side to it, but one of the things that we do need to monitor, and of course, that's what we saw with the, with the first discussion of the proposed calendar. You know, we saw the backlash that came out from that. And as has been discussed, there are certain key groups that you reach out to in terms of helping to gather some information to help you do that. But even last night, once the, once that calendar is presented, the second calendar, you know, sometimes I hesitate to wonder if it's not the right thing to do, if the right thing to do is not to put it out there until the board has voted on it tonight. You know, what if somebody had come up with something tonight at the day of saying, "Well, you know, we haven't thought of that," and then you're having to go back with a third version, or a change of the version? Sometimes I think we're better off just saying, "Look at the district website, look at the district Facebook page, you'll get the information you need there." That, you know, I'll stop there.
Yeah, sure.
Um, Harvey, we were talking about the events for the special needs kids.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Please, please, I forgot.
Um, so I've been in discussion with Chief Hoover over the last few months, our agreement to call for an event for our special needs population. I mean, they had a event that was October, and I just want to, we pleased, it will be pleased with the students, but I did get a lot of emails and concerns about our special needs population not being able to attend that, due to sensory overload, things like that. So he, you know, he said he would work with me to do a special event for our special needs population. So I reached out to Lisa Valente, who's the CPAD president. And we worked up a date of May 9th, where we're gonna hold it at Sutherd School, at 6:30. It's gonna go out to all the special needs kids, K through eight in the district. The police will be out in presence with maybe the canine dog, some of their equipment. They'll be covering with the kids, getting to know the kids a little bit more.
So you said 6:30?
Six thirty, yeah. And having the kids interact with the police officers. So it's more like a smaller event, so they're able to enjoy it a little bit more. And the chief has been really helpful in trying to get his schedule and his police officers out there. So we can't, we can't be more lucky.
Mr. Isola, what would it entail, and you have technology people here, what would it entail to do a forty-five second discussion on that, film it, and put it on the website?
On this night? This is a community event, I believe. I don't think.
It's a board event.
Right, yeah. So, but certainly, if it's a positive event within the community, we always, as long as it's nonprofit, I think our policy allows us to promote it. So we would certainly look positively on partnering with the police department, so.
There you go. Kudos. Kudos to you, Ms. Mangano, and to the chief, and to everybody involved. Hope it's a great success.
Yeah.
Mr. Banjivani, would you be opposed to exploring, maybe down the line from Community Interaction, trying a virtual meeting, maybe sometime over the summer, instead of us all showing up in person, doing something maybe via Skype or something like that?
If you're really asking my opinion, I'm not in favor of those, of those types of meetings for, for a large number of people signing on. There's certainly a benefit to taping a meeting, putting it where it can be seen later on, but.
I mean, this would be live, and for folks maybe don't have the ability or the time to come out because of other commitments. Maybe trying that once a year.
Yeah, I mean, look, it's certainly not my decision. I mean, it's really one for the committee, and you serve on the committee, so I think that, I think in our next interaction meeting, we'll put that on the agenda, and let's discuss it and leave it up to the entire committee. I certainly don't, I mean, I'm not the, I'm not the sayer on that.
Well, you are the chair, but I think the fact that you're gonna put it on the agenda for discussion will yield to a good outcome. It'll be a good process. So, thank you. And, you know, it's interesting, I think I started this whole conversation thread, and I appreciate it was good dialogue, but we have some more reports to go to. So seeing, I would like to turn to, thank you, Mr. Banjivani.
Sure.
Appreciate it. I'd like to turn to Dr. Lo.
Okay. The Education Committee met on April 9th, 5:00 p.m. The Social Studies Howe History was one of the topics on the agenda. Howe History is integrated within the Social Studies curriculum to align with the New York, New Jersey Student Learning Standards. Investigating Howe is the textbook of Howe History used by the students in Grade Two. She's always an actual member of staff. On her time, as a student in Howe.
She has her book. There you go.
The committee discussed additional Social Studies curricular ideas for meaningful ways Howe historical facts can be integrated into all grade levels, some of which already include Student Government Day and Arbor Day. Additional ideas included, utilize Howe Day to celebrate Howe Township, how our government operates, current events in Howe, learned elements of community, integrate growing up in Howe versus other regions, and guest speakers.
I think we should let Mrs. Dixell know what was going on and what happened. I know Mr. Harvey worked very hard with her as well. That was part of the process, right?
Mr., whoa. Sorry. Mr. Harvey had met with Ms. Dixell for, you know, I think they had a good, lengthy, multi-hour conversation, in which she shared some of her passion that is easily noticeable when she speaks about the history of Howe. And he had also shared with her some of the, many of the things that he had shared with the committee. Obviously, not the brainstorming efforts that we went through at the committee, you know, but maybe we can share back some of the.
I think it would be very rewarding to her to see the outcomes that she helped to initiate a discussion and dialogue that led to this. So I would, maybe we could draft a letter, or send something to her on her behalf, because I think she would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And would love to teach my son everything about Howe, so.
There you go. She's a tremendous resource and a gift to this district. And while you may not always agree with everything that she says, we appreciate her voice and find her to be a valuable part of our community. So, thank you. Continue, Dr. Lo.
The Legislative Advocacy Committee letter. The committee reviewed and offered input to the draft letter from the advocacy committee regarding statewide testing. The letter will express the board's concerns regarding assessment procedures and offer suggestions. And that's pretty much the end of my report.
Thank you, Dr. Lo.
Whichever mic, now I have too many microphones. I don't know.
Feel like you're in front of Congress, right? Mark Zuckerberg, there you go.
Congressman. Well, talked about Facebook, so there you go. But as we all might recall from earlier this night, the Student Board of Education also has referred and made a motion, which they then approved, that we would write that letter, that this board would then submit a letter on their behalf advocating for their.
So, so basically, we are following through, and they are having an impact. There you go. We'll make sure we communicate back to those students that their voices were heard and acted upon.
I'll add to that for just a second. It was interesting, because as part of that discussion, we said, you know, it's one thing for adults to write letters, but when you talk about legislators, and what maybe you want to get in front of them, because they get so much paper and so many emails, that maybe a short, a very short video from the students saying some of the things they said in the meetings today, if that were included with it, that maybe that might bring some impact also.
It's an interesting idea. Maybe the, have to give some thought and see if the parents would be willing to have their kids video, and if it's feasible. But what do you think, Mr. Isola?
I think we should continue to explore that idea.
Okay, very good. Follow on. All right. Okay, very good. Follow on. All right.
I'm sorry, would you say, oh, um, it's actually not on the agenda. Hold on. It did say, if we discuss that. Next meeting will be held based on the agreed upon a date in March. It's in May.
See, if you get there, Mr. Preston gets it.
This is our April, this is our April meeting date.
It's May fourteenth at seven o'clock.
There you go. Okay. Good. Thank you, Dr. Lo. Okay. Ms. Mallie, operations.
Okay, operations has not met since our last meeting, however. During today's student operations meeting, there was a request that I would like to formally bring to the board, to the advocacy committee about the New Jersey seatbelt law as it exists right now. It basically says we have to have seatbelts on the bus, but it does not say anything about actually wearing those seatbelts. So, we would like to have the advocacy committee look into that, potentially proposing new legislation that would now bring into requiring the seatbelts to actually be worn. And perhaps having some sort of a system to inform the driver when they're not being worn. And actually, these, these, these kids from Middle School South, once they create their safe bus technology, we could use that. I think that would work out just great, but that was what the, the children were proposing. So, I would like to officially bring that to the advocacy committee to put on their table. And that was for operations. On the safety end of things.
Can I just comment on that?
Sure.
I love the idea. Who would we want to make in that legislation responsible for verifying that they're wearing the seatbelts until that great invention comes about? Would that be responsible of, of an aide, the driver itself?
Right now, I believe the drivers are, there's different, different levels of what they do. They may get up and look around, they, to make sure everyone's belted in before they drive. Honestly, from the kids' point of view, they were saying that, that some kids just take their belts off in the middle of the ride and there's no way the driver would know that they don't have their belts on any longer. So, that was a concern that they brought to our.
I think it's a great point that Mr. Thor makes, and I think it's a great idea by the children. So, perhaps if we put it through the appropriate committees as well as advocacy, I think maybe needs to go back to operation, safety and policy and get some input and feedback because we want to be able to make sure that we give the advocacy a legislative intent that is achievable and feasible, and also doesn't end up promising more than we can deliver.
As the operations chair, I did take note of that to, to then talk to Mr. Sanisak for the operations committee to follow up on, so.
I love the idea. I just hope there would be some kind of technology, even if that doesn't exist like the kids presented tonight, that would be similar to like when we're in our own passenger car.
Yes.
And if you don't have your seatbelt on, you get that annoying sound that makes you want to put the seatbelt back on.
Yes.
Hopefully, all those buses that they build in the future will have that built in.
Hopefully, Middle School South designs it and we can forget taxation and just.
As long as the district gets.
Back on our patent rights.
As long as the district gets ten percent, we're good. We don't have to worry about our budget.
We can have some rich kids.
Dr. Lo.
Just had a question while the advocacy committee is looking into it. Be interesting to know why that state law is in effect and what are the pros and cons and the implications. But I, I know it's, you know, I've been in Jersey nine years. I know it is a, a law, but.
You've got Mr. Sanisak.
I could, I could push this meeting to midnight and explain the compartmentalization and why they raised the seats and a whole lot of things. But maybe we'll make that a topic for operations and I'll, I'll go through that.
I would definitely follow up.
And make it with the advocacy committee as well.
Well, as we go through the committee process, each committee's report can then be copied over to the other committees involved and they can get a piece of what's going on and get a flavor for it so we can collaborate without having to hold a joint meeting. But we can certainly share information. Yes?
I was wondering, while operations looks at this, perhaps policy can also do it in terms of trying to look at some of the issues. Because I'm aware of years ago, the Department of Education years ago was not supportive of the seatbelts. That's a long time ago.
It's a, it's a very long, it's a very long story.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
But point is, we might be able to get a little background too to go to operations.
Well, we'll synergize through the different committee structures and then, absolutely. And then finally get it to advocacy. There you go. All right.
Excellent. And continuing on with the student meeting today on safety and advocacy, this, I would like to make a motion that this board follow through with their request to create a brochure or a handout to instruct school volunteers on the requirements and actions during a school safety drill. Currently, they have, we have a sheet, I believe, that we give to substitute teachers, some sort of information. But as a volunteer at the school, I personally was in the school a couple of weeks ago volunteering for book fair. And we had a fire drill and I didn't know where to go. And thankfully, the people that were there volunteering with me did. So, I was saying, oh, okay, good. So, that started a conversa, I just mentioned that story and that started a conversation with the students this afternoon. And they, they wanted to create something that we could hand to volunteers or hand out to parents in the beginning of the year to, to, as, inform people what to do in, in a drill if they're in the building at the top of a drill.
Really solid idea. Folks, yeah, it's a really solid idea. We've been working on orientations for our board members and continuing to develop that, so I think it's a great idea.
I think this is for, not just board members, for parent volunteers.
Absolutely. No, I meant, what I meant was we're taking it to now the next level also, including volunteers. And so, if it makes sense and we can incorporate that into something that would get the message across to volunteers on what to do in things like a fire drill, as you pointed out, and others. Okay, well, that's.
Definitely something that people that are in the schools.
Good. Ms. Ogrson, thanks for the feedback. I think we've got multiple feedback that supports it and our kids are hitting the nail on the head. So, then we can put that on as a, what?
A four.
Or a direction? Do we want to have it as a motion or can we just have?
Well, just so that we can tell the children that we took the action, we could make it a four. And as you know, we're, now that it's stopped snowing and having holidays, we're going to get our, our committee together for the security review. So, we could, that will be part of it.
Then we'll have a motion, a four, which will read as the board will formally instruct the administration to develop a instruct, an educational brochure for our volunteers in the schools on safety protocols and other procedures of importance.
And if it snows, it's going to be your fault for saying that.
Yeah.
All right. So, is that acceptable to the board as a four? I got a motion from Mrs. Mallie. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Miller. Okay.
That will be a four when we take it around, sir.
Yep, there you go. There you go. The, the voice of the student board of ed is already present on our agenda here tonight.
And I have more.
You have more? Okay.
And the students in, during safety and advocacy also wanted to designate, officially designate, the April board meeting to be autism awareness and acceptance day. They added the word acceptance into it. The day should be recognized also at the school level. They would like to see also the schools to support the day by, and at the evening meeting by wearing and displaying the color blue. So, the students wanted to do that. So, I'd like to make a motion to officially make the April board meeting as autism awareness and acceptance day.
Okay, any discussion on that?
That would be a five, sir, when we take.
If you have support, then we have a new event that will formally be enshrined as autism awareness day.
And acceptance day.
And accept, awareness and very important.
Be added, so.
Yeah, there you go.
Important part of it.
Okay, very good. Okay, that's a five then.
That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mallie.
Your operations, next meeting date, please.
Mr. Sanisak?
We will consult and have one tomorrow, ma'am.
There we go.
All right, very good. Mr. Gurman?
Uh, the policy committee has not met since our last meeting and we're waiting, you know, new issues to come up that would, and we don't have a date at this moment, but I'm sure that'll be forthcoming. However, we do seem to have a new item for the agenda on, on the issue of the school seatbelts. And we'll look into that as part of the review. The other issue Dr. Lo talked about, about testing and assessments, came here first to the board last meeting. Then went to the education committee. I attended the meeting. It was a wonderful discussion. From that came a letter following the discussion with the basic outlines of all the things education talked about. It was an excellent letter. It then went to legislative advocacy. We looked at it. And I think the one thing that perhaps we just needed to clarify was who the target audience is. So, initially, the focus was to people who have expertise in education, in the Department of Education and people of that background. And as we talked to the advocacy, we simply want to tweak it a little to put in language maybe more for the layperson so the letter can be, you know, sent out to a larger audience. So, the letter is basically, as we understand it, going to be prepared and ready for the next board meeting and it'll.
It'll be put on the table for discussion?
Yes. And, and that way, so, because I think basically the, the work has been done. One question I just have, what Mr. Preston mentioned and with the students here, about how that part of what they recommended might, you know, fit in with what we're doing. It was amazing, some of the comments that were made. There was a comment made from a young man sitting at this side of the table, which he said at a committee meeting today, and he said it again as well, which was fascinating. He pointed out that perhaps two weeks of school time is spent on preparing for the test when, if the students are prepared already, they're losing time for education to, for a rich, enriched curriculum that's challenging, that would help them to not only be prepared for the test, which they may be prepared for, but to be able to continue their learning. So, yeah.
What I thought was compelling, said right here, actually, I think it was by Sophia over at the end of the table. Could we just stick with STAR, which is what one of the recommendations that is coming out into that letter? The, the input from ed committee was to use the locally developed. Place, can you have a, a waiver perhaps or something out of the every year testing that, that comes from the state? So, I, you know, the, the board is always intent on capturing the voice of the children. And I, and I think hearing what the children had to say, we're, we're very much on par, running a parallel.
I think that's, I've made my position on the frequency of testing clear in the past. And while I respect also the opinion of our board members who feel that it is necessary to have a standardized assessment, you know, and to have that kind of data set to work from, I agree with you. I think if we can get something to the right people, then we, you know, especially around that idea of the STAR, I think it's phenomenal. And I think if it, if it brings us closer to listening to the, the people we serve, who are, at the end of the day, everything we're all about here are students, then it's, it's even better. As we go forward, maybe take a look at aiming that letter at the education committee for the assembly in the, in the senate, right? Because I know a lot of those folks, while they may not be educators, all of them, they have had, hopefully, a lot of experience working on educational issues. And they would be, I think logically, the people that we want to make sure get the word. So, but I know you are way ahead of me on that one, so I'll leave that to your good devices where you, you think you want to send it. That letter will be coming out to the board at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. And we'll get to look at it beforehand on board docs, right?
Absolutely. Or SharePoint, but yes, we'll get it to you one way or the other.
All right, very good. Thank you. Mr. Gurman, anything further?
Yes, there's one bill we discussed that's in this legislative session, the current session. It's Assembly Bill Number seven sixty-four, which its synopsis points out that it would require public school buildings to be equipped with emergency light and panic alarms linked to local law enforcement. And this is, of course, I'm not going to go through the whole speech.
We have it.
All the work that we've done, that you've done, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Isola, and with the, our chief Kudrick and law enforcement, where we, we, we lead in this. Mr. Sanisak has pointed out that, and again, this is the one point in this particular bill that would call for the panic alarm to be a silent security system. And that's an issue now in terms of what's best for the safety of our children. And if you don't mind, I might ask Mr. Sanisak to elaborate a little more.
And advocacy gave me leave to, to contact them and we will be discussing how our internal system, which does announce for the student's safety, how we are ahead of them and we are already putting the strobes in. But the, the technical reading of the bill may be slightly divergent from what we think is best practice. And we hope to share that with our legislators.
Let's get them up to speed because the last thing in the world we want to do is having legislators unintentionally throwing a monkey wrench into a well-designed system, okay?
I don't do that.
So, perhaps we can help them come to a better understanding of.
Absolutely, absolutely, so.
All right, very good. Thank, good catch. Glad you saw that.
Again, thank you. And I do want to mention one thing about another time I spent in the schools on leadership day at Taunton School. We've seen such outstanding achievement on the part of some of our students in the upper grades. But on leadership day at Taunton, I had the opportunity to be in a kindergarten class for really a full period. And the class was divided into four groups. The teacher was sitting with one group and the students would rotate, or did rotate, in, in terms of the tasks they had. And to be quite honest, it, it, it was just a fantastic experience to watch it. If I may just talk a little bit about it. The students were, first of all, on target, on task. They were in small groups, pretty, pretty much independent, except for the one group that was sitting with the teacher. All the others were, you know, sitting or working on their own tasks. They had these plastic eggs, which you get, you can manipulate. One group was doing arithmetic and you, by turning the different, you know, turning the eggs a bit, they were able to see the different, you know, results, three plus one, six plus four. And then they would make notations on a piece of paper, great series of them. And each of them were working independently and yet having a great time doing it. And it was fascinating to watch them beginning to see the numbers and being able to have fun with it, and they were enjoying it. Another group was working with letters, words. So, they'd have on one side of the plastic egg a, a, a letter. On the other side, they had a number of other letters. And I saw them put together a whole series of words and then write them on the page. It was fascinating to see the joy, to see the involvement, to see the fact that they were all on task. And then the third group was with the teacher and they were not only manipulating the egg, but they were able to construct things around it. Then they were asked to draw it. They were asked to color it. They were asked to identify the colors. And it was fantastic to see. So, they could create with their hands. They could draw. They, they, they were able to, you know, identify the colors. It was fascinating. The one group I didn't go over to, I watched them because they all rotated, was the group with the iPads. I mean, here kindergarten kids and you know what they could do. So, to see all these things that these young people could do, to work within a struct, within a structured environment and yet at the same time have this opportunity to be creative and to have fun and to work together in groups and to follow all these things, it was magnificent. And, you know, again, it attests to what, as, as we say, and Mr. Isola says, you know, this is not what education was like X number of years back. It's a different world. And this is with kindergarten students. So, it was just magnificent.
Thanks for sharing that, Mr. Gurman. That's, that's, that's really well appreciated. Okay, so I believe that concludes our committee reports and liaison reports. Mr. Sanisak?
It is now time for the first public comment. Excuse me, Mr. Sanisak, one addition, please. I know it's getting late. I apologize.
It's all right.
But I would feel really poorly badly if I didn't. We spoke about Middle School North's drama performance. I had the opportunity since we last met to attend the Middle School South play Cinderella and it was just absolutely awesome. It was a wonderful performance and such, such talent is, is within our school district. And again, the staff that cultivates and nurtures that and, and brings that to such a performance. I couldn't tell you how proud both my, my wife and I were. We could, we might as well have been in New York City. It was really awesome. As Middle School North's play was, we had previously spoken about that. And I'll just ask Mrs. Callender quickly, we had girls' night and boys' night out. We've kind of reinstated that program and.
I got a chance to walk in as I picked up my daughter and see, but I can tell you my wife attended and she said it was an incredible experience.
Yeah, unfortunately, we would have liked better attendance, higher level of attendance, but the program was.
But it was still a tremendous program, so, uh, behalf of my family, thank you.
Yeah, so we had both activities last week upon return from break. We did really for quite a few weeks, you know, advertise, social media, you know, parents got phone calls, you know, during the, the month of March, then another one before break, you know, just for eighth grade parents. Then before break ended, just encouraging them.
grade parents, then before break ended, just encouraging them to go online, sign up, register, et cetera. And we were able to get some more registrations because of the push, and we had the counselors bring kids in, groups of kids. Kids from sports teams say, can you talk it up with your friends? Can you go? And maybe if you're going, your friends would want to go. Really trying hard in every venue to gain some interest in the events. We increased our registrations probably into the twenties for each of the events, but unfortunately, when the, it came to the night, we probably had, I think it was nine or ten girls or so.
A dozen.
Yeah. And not that many more for the boys, and we had a lot more boys signed up. And we know they didn't forget, because we sent so many emails out. People do get busy. However, the people who did attend, parents and students, really had great positive feedback about the sessions and the activities. I wasn't able to go to the Girls Night Out. I know they did yoga and some other
Self-defense? I heard all about it.
Yeah. And people were saying, just seeing the moms next to their daughters on the yoga mats, you know, it was, they were laughing and smiling and just really enjoying their time together. But also, really, some really important topics that were discussed in the breakout session, so very, very valuable there.
Including vaping and other things.
Yeah, vaping was one that we did for both groups. We did safe dating and good relationships, and how to know if you're in a good relationship and not in a great relationship. That kind of was interesting in the boys group, because I don't know that they were even interested in the topic of dating, but they needed to hear what was being said, because they will be interested as they go into high school and become more interested. And to know what is a good and healthy relationship, you know, early on is very, very important, because, you know, it's not only girls that can be on the receiving side of the poor relationship pieces. It can happen to young men as well, and for them to be aware of those things from the beginning are really important. So I really, the Boys Night started with, they did the, that game Minute to Win It, and they had all different activities that they had to do in the Minute to Win It. And they started out kind of a little slow and shy, and boy, did they get into it after the first two or three things that they did. And the high school boys from the Heroes and Cool Kids came, and they couldn't have been more inviting and helpful to the young men, and they were the greatest kids that showed up. And it was just so nice to see them relating to the boys that were then coming to high school. It really was very, very nice. But I do want to thank the, you know, our staff that came out. Ms. Rabone did a lot of work on organizing the event. Our counselors came out to the event both evenings. Our school counselors from the middle schools came, and some from the elementary schools, and even counselor interns that have been working for us came out to support it. And then Barnabas Health, you know, our talk representative that's over at Aldridge School did a great deal of work with Ms. Rabone, lots of fundraising, lots of donations from Barnabas, donations from the Alliance, I believe, just lots of participation and donations. ShopRite donated food for baskets that went home to everyone that came, they, because we also promoted the Howl Eats Together. So they talked about that as a springboard for the month of April, and Howl Eats Together, and having a meal with your family, and talking to your kids, and turning off social media, and turning on conversation, and listening with your kids. So the parents had a talk about that while the kids were in their sessions, but lots of donations for that. The boys all left with a really nice toiletry kit, you know, that had different items in it, but just a really nice kit that opened up that you can travel with, et cetera. And as I said before, the girls had the yoga mats. Every family got a basket of food. And then we also did raffles. There were baskets that we raffled off, and almost everybody, because it was a small turnout, left with something. Kids got Wawa gift cards. So it really was great. So we're hoping that what we started with here, and even those small attendance but great feedback, will lead by word of mouth to maybe an increase in next year and going forward and going forward.
Can I?
So really excited about it, and it turned out to be, although small, an excellent event.
Thank you. Having gotten the word from the folks in my family who participated, my wife, my daughter, I want to thank you for that. I think I can share with this board that I think it's something that I've, I think is so important, and, you know, I know Mr. Bon Giovanni would echo this. Community interaction takes many forms. This is one of the more important ones. And, you know, we used to have an emphasis on the Parent Academy, which was also another brilliant idea. And I do urge you to continue this, to keep it going. It may get off to a slower start, perhaps, but the, it's such an incredible benefit to our young people and to their parents. And it has so many, so many things to give. So if you continue it, I think it will continue to build.
We absolutely plan to continue it, and we won't, you know, let a small start keep us from continuing. So, and I did want to say too, just for those who aren't aware of the hashtag Howl Eats Together, that was advertised and sent out to the community. But it is something that Barnabas Health has been doing across the state with different districts and communities that they're working in. So it's something that they're also promoting in Howl, but they're encouraging a family to have a family meal together, and when you're having that family meal together, and it could be breakfast, because we know with schedules and sports and everything else, that it's not always easy to find that common time for dinner, but any common time you can find to sit down and eat with your family. Snap a picture of that meal, post it on social media with the hashtag Howl Eats Together, all one, you know how you do it, and a hashtag. And then you will be, well, I always used to get it wrong, because I would put the right punctuation in spaces, and my kids would say, Mom, what are you doing? That's not how you do a hashtag. So I learned. But then you get entered into a raffle to win a, I think it's a hundred dollar gift card to ShopRite or something.
Oh, I wish I'd known that last week.
So, yeah. So any meal, breakfast, lunch, dinner with your family. Take the picture, put the hashtag, and you'll be entered in, and they'll draw at the end of the month of April. The whole month of April is open. Yeah, the whole month of April is open for the pictures to be posted.
It's a great message, and thank you for promoting it. It's so important.
In the baskets that were given to the families, they also had cards in them on conversation. You probably saw it, but starters for conversation at the table with your kids, and things that, you know, just to promote the conversation and get it going and continuing. So they'll be sharing some more tips on that as time goes on, so families have more information on that. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Two very, very quick discussion pieces.
Okay.
Very quick. One, whoever the group is that worked on picking board docs, I have to tell you, I'm really enjoying this process and taking notes on here, and it's going to save so many lost notes and papers and everything that I've got from over the years. So I think, I think these are a great idea. It's been easy to, and I'm not a typist, but it's been easy to take all my notes of the discussions on here, so.
Iron Mountain's not going to be happy about this, right?
I've really enjoyed using this tonight. The other piece is just a reminder, it's going to be nice. We have three different board members who are attending leadership conferences this weekend at New Jersey School Board, so that'll be pretty cool.
All right. Thank you. I believe we have finished all our reports, and it is time for the first public comment.
First public comment, and they are waiting with bated breath to address us.
Let's open the floor.
Whereas the Howl Board of Education determines that comments may last forty-five minutes and be conducted in accordance with its bylaw 0164.1, and may be limited to three minutes each. The officer would expect a time in the quorum. We'll be the president of the board, Mr. Timothy O'Brien. May the floor be open.
Please.
Are there comments at this time? Seeing none, may the floor be closed.
Please. Okay.
Thank you.
I believe it is time now for the agenda.
Yes, and I would, I would ask, as Mr. Miller pointed out during finance, that we take in, from the 6,000 series, seventeen point eight, nine, and ten first on separate votes. Please note that in the backup, the ordinance that seventeen point eight references is included in the, in the backup, and it is on the agenda on the web. And if we can have a mover and a seconder, I would take that around.
Seconded by Mr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Bon Giovanni.
Moved by Mr. Miller, seconded by Mr. Bon Giovanni. And to humor me, if you would just give me three votes when I call your name, yes, 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 no, 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 whatever, and that will be on the three motions. Mr. Miller?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bon Giovanni?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Gurman?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Dr. Lo?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Malley?
Yes, aye, yes.
You owe one more yes to us.
All right, fine, aye, yes. I was going, aye.
Mrs. Mangano?
Yes, yes.
Misses Okerson?
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Thor?
As Daniel Bryan from WWE would say, yes, yes, yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes cubed.
Thank you. And, and thank you, and as the student board pointed out today, this is a great opportunity. We're fulfilling their requests, and thank you for that. The motion, all three of those motions pass, nine votes in favor, none opposed. Would you care to take the rest of the consent agenda in addition to?
Yes, but I think, I think our math person was looking, giving me a frown, so I'll say yes, yes, yes.
I'm sorry, did I not call you?
No, that was just because you were being corny.
Yeah, I know, all right.
Three cubed.
It is getting pretty close to ten o'clock, so that's what happens when that cap.
Yes, three times.
It was correct, though. It was correct, man.
May I take?
Oh, was it correct? Okay, I feel better.
May I take the consent agenda, any addenda, including the two new items, so it's A1 through A5?
Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
Then we have a mover and a seconder.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Miller, seconded by Ms. Malley. May I take that around?
Please, do.
Mr. Miller?
Only yes if you want.
Just one this time.
Just one will suffice.
Ms. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Gurman?
Yes.
Dr. Lo?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano?
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Thor?
We.
Mr. Bon Giovanni?
See.
Mr. O'Brien?
Don't get me started, yes.
Is that good? Mr. Gurman, on which one?
Abstaining on the guidance counselor appointment, sir? Thank you?
Yes. So noted.
Abstaining on that, please make that note. Thank you.
The consent agenda, any addenda are approved, nine votes in favor with the abstention noted for the record. It is now time for a second public comment. Please repeat.
Yeah, you don't have to go through the same.
Please repeat the moat, the instructions previously stated. Are there any comments at this time?
Seeing none.
Seeing none, may the floor be closed.
Move it!
Ms. Malley, move for adjournment?
We are adjourned.
Turn, thank you.
That's an unbroken record for you now, Ms. Malley. Everyone get home safe. Thank you.
Okay.